All right, we'll officially call the meeting to order. And I thank Rhonda Wooton for filling in today for our regular. Clark Heather Fennel, who is out sick right now. And Ms. Wooton will fulfill all the normal responsibilities as she is equally qualified. Number two on the agenda this afternoon is public comment. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
No, sir.
All right, we're going to number three. And before we transact any business, I would, just for public record and consistency clarity, we have filled the seat Gerald Brown. And we'll always miss Gerald and appreciate him. And those of us that have known him all of his life considered him a friend the entire time and will never replace him as a person. But we have named Judge Arnold to be the person to fill that seat. We have not had him sworn in, but we all recognize and understand the laws of the land of the state of North Carolina that he is qualified and could have been sworn in by any authorized person and was qualified and could be sitting here right now if he had chosen to go be sworn in. It's my understanding that the commissioners in the original discussions were to assign the person the responsibility in the future and have that person sworn in in November. Is that what you talked about? October, I'm sorry, October, the regular meeting, which is, which is what, the 18th? 18th. So today is what, the 10th? My question to you is because he is qualified and the state of North Carolina says he could have and may be sworn in, is it still your pleasure to wait until the regular meeting? Or do you mind Deputy Clark swearing in now? Just to make sure we have a uniform understanding what pleasure the commissioners is. Just follow me.
I'm good with this, sir.
Judge, you...
Does he want to get started?
I was just gonna say, does he want to participate in this as a commissioner?
Well, that's what I'm gonna say. We ain't gonna give him a choice. Do you have, do you have the documents?
Yes.
Judge, do you mind being sworn in now? The seat's already warm. It could be hotter. Madam Deputy Clerk, do you mind swearing the judge in? And we'll go ahead and...
I'm sure we will. If you want to step outside, Ms. Earl.
Yes, sir. Welcome aboard.
We now have a full board present. And Mr. Hewitt, do you want to say anything at this point? Or Assistant Town Manager, do you want, how do we want to proceed from here?
Just by way of introduction, I'd like to welcome Chip Hemingway, who is the principal with Bowman, Murray, and Hemingway out of Wilmington, North Carolina. And based on preliminary discussion, discussions with Chip, he indicated a desire to deliberate a confab with the board in order to get a better picture and handle on what the expectations were regarding the proposed scope of work that will be forthcoming. So that's, that's why we're here today, is for the board to dialogue with Chip a bit. Chip, if that's, that's not your understanding, please.
You're welcome.
Clear that up.
Sit up and speak into the microphone, please, sir.
All right. That, that seems like a great description of it. And thank you for that. And thank, thank y'all for having me be part of this project. We just toured the facility and, you know, very excited about it.
All right. Commissioners, what's your pleasure? How do you want to go?
Now, that was my next question, is if you've been through it. Have you, I was actually talking, walking in the door. We didn't need to somehow have this meeting down there. But have you been through the whole, all the buildings?
We walked through the building. We walked the length of the pier. We walked under the pier. And we walked the site.
Okay.
And just observed the conditions at this point.
There are some documents that I've told Chip that he hasn't been privy to, like the board's plan document, the written proposal that we put forward to the local government commission, just to give some background on what the board's impetus was in going forward. And I owe him that. He doesn't have it, hadn't received it. So it is that a bit of disadvantage on coming in here without review of that. But still, just briefly talking with him, I, I think that got a pretty good perspective on what, what can be done with that property. But again, the purpose of pulling together today is so that he'll be able to make a proposal to us, a contract proposal, that the board can agree to moving forward that Scott, the deliverables in.
You've, you've read the due diligence reports, right? You have seen those?
I have not.
You have not?
I've read the RFQ. It's the only information I have. And so our first conversation with David was, I told him that I had talked to, I think, three different people before the RFQ or, you know, during the process and kind of what this project may be or wants to be or should be. And, you know, looking through the RFQ, I thought maybe a discussion, and with y'all, no better people to discuss it with, of what, how that might be modified, changed, or interpreted through this RFQ for me to deliver a contract to David. And so I could continue on some of those scenarios to start, if you'd like. And you could say...
Were you able to add, David, did you give him the inspection information and all that stuff that has been done on the pier so to give him kind of an idea?
No, he's, like I said, he's operating at a disadvantage without that background information. I haven't provided him that information.
Is that something that we can provide him quickly?
Yeah.
So, you know, on RFQ, it says, you know, develop a site plan, restaurants, concessions, public restroom, campground, ocean fishing pier, and landscaping. And one of the, one person I spoke with is like, is it a new pier or refurbish the existing pier? Is it a new pier house? Or try to get the existing one going? Or is it get the existing going while planning for new? And so that's a lot, you know, quite a few variables for us to nail down in one proposal. So I just wanted...
Well, I wrote the pier paper that was the description of how we came to the decision that we would purchase the property. So I can, if nobody minds, I can kind of quickly go through it. The assumption was that the building, which is an old building, could be salvaged and that there would be a grill restaurant of some, a restaurant of some sort. Right now, there is a kind of a grill. But something that continues a food service, that there would be another area that would be a shop that would probably be associated with whoever leases, eventually leases the pier. We're gonna have to have restrooms in the facility that will have to be ADA compliant so that the restaurant can run. And we also need ADA compliance for the pier property, as I understand things. The pier itself, there is a question about whether or not it is worth investing the money to give it what is estimated in the due diligence report as an additional 10 to 15 years of life. Or we face the question of if the pier was in worse shape than we understood when we made the purchase because the underwater investigation hadn't been done yet, whether we might be faced with it would be better to tear the pier down and start again. There is an access lot that is adjacent to the pier. It's, it's part of the overall purchase, but that is supposed to be for an, an ADA for handicapped accessibility to get, as I understand it, onto the pier, but also I would gather onto the beach. There'll be handicap parking associated with that. Right now, we just have the whole pier property parking as pretty much paid parking with some handicapped spaces. Once we have businesses there, they'll have to be the required number of parking spaces associated with those businesses, which will also include a certain number of handicapped spaces there in addition to in our parking lot. There's a RV campground that is supposed to hold, I think, six RVs. The question is, can that be better laid out? That it's a bit, a bit less awkward? But I believe the board wants to keep that section for, for campground. So I, I think the question is, should the pier, I, I would think there should be two scenarios for the pier. One is fixing it, making it usable, safe, ADA compliant. The cost and the benefit for keeping it for X years, because the due diligence estimate might not be your estimate, versus the cost of starting over. I mean, I just think those scenarios need to be laid out.
Oh, sure. Yeah.
Okay? The building itself, I don't know that we ever considered a separate scenario other than somehow we're going to bring this back to something a little bit better, well, better. The discussion was about gutting it, pretty much gutting it, and building it again from the inside and then adding the restrooms. There need to be outdoor showers because that's a big beach area as well. We've talked about two restrooms within the building. I personally don't know if we need to have more restrooms than that.
Well, building code and zoning relative to the building use will dictate the number. There'll be no, there'll be a definite number.
So I think, I think basically, you know, once the building, the pier decided how many parking spaces are needed to be allocated, where they will be, then what will be left will be the parking lot itself for paid parking. Have I left anything out? And we've talked about seating.
Yeah, I mean, we've talked about the parking spaces and all that. My, my concern is the building itself. In the, in my look at the building and my discussions with the town inspector, that it is, the restaurant side is salvageable. The other side of it is in relatively good shape. It's gonna need some upgrading. But she said we're gonna have to have two restrooms inside, at least inside the cafe area, which could be used by the retail side too. And then we're gonna have to have some outside for general public. That's, that's, and I looked at, I looked at the pier during our last hurricane or our last storm. I don't believe it was as bad as it could have been. But it seemed to, it seemed to do really well. I mean, I sat out there for 30 minutes with the water coming up through the floor and it didn't seem to move a bit. When you first looked at it today, I mean, is, is it salvageable?
Well, my, my first impression is the pier might be more salvageable than the building, just based on me looking, you know, I assume the building is below floods, flood.
It is.
Significantly below. I don't know how many times it's ever washed over right there. Probably none. I don't know.
It's happened, according to Gil, it's happened twice.
Okay.
It got into the back wall. But he has no, I mean, it's probably a V zone there.
Yeah.
So it's, it's, the walls are gonna be impacted. I guess if we did something to that building, they'd have to be breakaway, you know, obviously to keep from sustaining critical damage. But back when we were doing this, this thing's an elephant, pretty big one. The number one goal of the whole piece of property was to secure it for public use. And we've done that. 50 feet of it, or part, or all of the west side 50 foot is for, like she said, a walkway and, and just public access, cam access, maybe some parking along with that. We do need the public restroom facilities and showers and whatnot. I don't know what you can incorporate into that. When it got to the building, and I'm a general contractor, so I walked it with the building inspector and we kind of talked it over. We have to have a revenue stream to even do this because it's just, that's the way I look at things, how are we gonna pay for it before we do it? Without, you know, we can't even mention raising taxes or any of that kind of stuff. So I did a little research and I did put some pricing on it. So capping the slab that's there was one of my ideas, where you could put in new plumbing and stuff like that for the rest, the grill or whatever it's gonna be. It doesn't have to be a restaurant or whatever it's gonna be.
Right.
And I went so far as to asking or having people approach me to, to rent it. Once the town acquired it, people were coming to me and asking, you know, we want to rent this thing? When's it gonna be ready? All questions I didn't have any answers for. However, I had a couple people that put the idea in my head that they were willing to do the upfitting on the inside. Meaning, we give them four walls and a facade and a roof, and they do the whatever, they, they finish the space just like you would any commercial space in, anywhere.
Right.
And by just some rough numbers, and this is from good old boys, people that I work here every day to put windows, siding. I didn't really get into the roof because I don't know what that's gonna involve, whether you would set trusses over what's there, repair the, the flat, you know, the rubber roof that's on there and repair it, put wall and all that stuff. But just to do like hardy siding and things like that. And, and, you know, a section of the wall at a time all the way around the building was a couple hundred thousand dollars. And capping the slab with a six inch cap, which would fix most of the footing and foundation problems and the whole thing if you did it. And you know what I'm talking about, like pouring it monolithic downward, cut the, it's all on field. You know, it's a race slab. So there's a wood floor in there, I guess I'm assuming, where they cut the floor out and put the plumbing in for the grill is the only reason I can think they put wood back. But if we filled all that and capped it, that was just some rough numbers I did. And then the rough revenue numbers, I had one guy said five, he'd pay $5,000 if, if that was the case. And I don't know if he's still on deck with this or not. But he would pay $5,000 a month, which is $60,000 a year to the town to rent both of those spaces in that building, once those, once that was completed. And then campground revenue, although I came by there today and I don't know if we really need to try to cram six in there, but if we could get six and we could get some kind of estimated revenue out of six nice camping spots, it would be another 50. So we could be bringing in, you know, 100 to $120,000 a year off of that, just to rental off of that, those spaces without going real deep on the inside. We have to make it safe to be able to, to offer it like that. But to go in and, you know, to finish the inside of that thing, you know, you don't know what people are gonna want or need or any of that that might want to rent it.
Right. Sure, just put bathrooms in and somebody, whatever they want to.
Four walls, I mean, really.
Yeah. Okay.
And then there's a question if, that's not even taken into consideration if somebody wanted, I don't know if the town's gonna keep the pier. That's a, I don't know what's gonna happen with the pier. So public or private town run or private entity run, we probably need a space to fish and tackle, passes.
Oh, yeah. Sure.
Drinks, beverages, all that type of thing.
Mm-hmm.
And the building, Tim Evans, have you met Tim?
I just met him.
Just did. He's our building inspector. But anyway, there's, we talked about adding like uncovered decks on the ocean front, things of that nature that might, you know, enhance it, give people place to sit or whatnot. I mean, you go up and down the coast and there's oceanfront, you know, establishments everywhere. I know they're very vulnerable and, but they're, they're out there. So we got, I guess the grandfathered in case is where we can even do something to this building. If we do something from ground zero, it's gonna have to be raised.
Right.
Everything.
Yeah.
And I don't, it's just, at this juncture, it's just, I don't think we could finance.
Right. Well, I understand that.
Without some outside.
Yeah, so you know, kind of the scenario, you get it running, back in operation, bring the people in, let them, you know, get, get some income out of it.
But Chip, I talked to Neil a couple of times, and I think you once.
Okay.
And it was, the question was, you know, to, to refurbish it as your group has done before with other structures like that. The availability of grant money to help support that. I mean, y'all are, seem to be really good at that. And it'd be something that we would want to definitely keep in mind, especially on the refurbishing of the pier.
Right.
The pier itself.
Yeah.
That is, again, it's, we had a pretty, the ocean was pretty mad last Friday. So it's...
Oh, yeah.
Probably is, I don't, I don't know, you need to look at the reports that we got back on the underwater surveys and the...
Was there any?
Engineering stuff on it to see what you think about it.
One sentence synopsis on the survey, is it, what did it say? Good, not good, couldn't tell, or?
They rec, the estimate was, a rough estimate was $500,000 to $750,000 to repair the pier sufficient to extend its lifespan 10 to 15 years.
Okay.
And then there was the underwater inspection, which added another 80. There was also a caveat that the firm that actually, that we actually had overseeing the inspection thought that the $500,000 to $750,000 estimate might be low. So we, we basically have taken this as, you know, we may need a million dollars to extend the lifespan 10 to 15 years. But the railings are all in bad shape. I mean, it's, it's in there. It's kind of like the pilings were reviewed. There's some that need work. There's corroded fasteners. There's, there's a lot of stuff.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, there's a lot of stuff there that, you know, that, do you replace it? And again, if it'll give you that 10 to 15 years, is it worth it? So the due diligence reports kind of lay out everything on that pier that over the years would need to be replaced. There's like a one to three year, and then there's overtime. So it's, it's dollars. It's what it costs to keep it going, to bring it back up versus what it would cost to just do it fresh.
Yeah, well, certainly gonna be cheaper to repair it than to build a new pier. And, I mean, there's wooden piers all across the state and east coast, and they've been there a long time. And y'all's looks pretty good compared to a lot of them I've looked at. And, you know, I think you could get a new handrail system, replace all that hardware, reinforce the joist or structures underneath where needed, which, you know, just seemed to be a couple spots that wobbled a little bit, you know, that slope, might not even have to fix.
Yeah.
And then, you know, your scenario of repairing the building, you could do that. You could have a, you know, we could, we could approach it in any, any way. But as far as the, what's laid out in RFQ, you know, that's just what I wanted to know, what y'all would like. You know, it says renderings and also I'm assuming that's just renderings of maybe the existing building or some ways to improve the existing building and the existing pier.
I think it would be, I mean, we chose your firm because of your experience with, with piers.
Right.
And any suggestions, you know, we're up here looking at it this way. Every one of us, if we would draw it on a piece of paper, it'd be different.
Right, yeah, sure. Well, I told David, my, just in my initial thing, let you get it going. You do let the pier live as long as it can live. And you...
But people want to get back out on it.
Yeah.
I mean, that's no doubt.
Prepare to replace the building just because it's below flood, you know? That, that's just...
There's, I don't know all the strings with the repair, replace the buil, I mean, there's 50 percent, like, and Tim knows everything.
Yeah. And when I say replace the building, I mean...
Eventually.
Whenever, whenever it's convenient for the town or a good idea.
But I think even in the repair stage, we can only do so much.
Only 50% before bringing the whole building up to current, which is lifting the building up out of the flood. That, that's your limiting factor of what you can do to the building.
There was something about, Tim, you're back there, so chime in if I'm wrong. But something about we pointed out some safeties, efficiencies and stuff that, that would be excluded from that 50%.
Can I feel he hear you, Tim, please?
I mean, he's been a big part of explaining all this to us, so he can...
When it comes to substantial damage and substantial improvement, either one, mostly for substantial improvement, if there has been identified prior to the improvements have been identified, safety issues, safety issues are exempt from the dollar amount that's included. You can't have a government entity condemn something and then force someone to go above 50%. So if it's found to be a safety issue or an issue that would render it to be unsafe once the NOV or the issue is identified, then it's excluded from the cost in substantial improvement. That's FEMA guidelines.
Which possibly allows us to do that work. And, well, I guess from what you're saying, it allows us to do that work specifically and not go against the 50%. Which is a lot of work.
That, that would be up to the, to the way the FEMA guidelines are written, that documentation would have to have already been identified and located, which it was. Whenever the commissioners in their great wisdom ordered the inspection of the building by the engineering company and by the building staff, we identified those deficiencies and therefore those deficiencies will be excluded, just like they would be if it was a private entity.
So when you say safety issue, like, just give me one example. So when you say safety issue, like, just give me one example.
Well, there's, there's several issues in the building. For instance, uh, there's a lot of electrical in there. That's, that's our safety violations that shouldn't be in there. We identified those in the original report. Um, I can't remember what else was in there, but there was a few structural things that were in there. Um, uh, but we did, we did a pretty good extensive look at it. Uh, I, it was me and an engineer, Roseman Pearson, that went through it. Um, and, and I'm pretty sure that's part of the public records somewhere, uh, going back to when we started.
Right, okay.
It's a, it's quite a list.
Yeah, okay, so that, that takes, yeah, I mean, it.
Yeah, so then.
Factor in those things.
And I don't know how the building's valued to get the fifty percent.
Well, you got, you got three ways you can value, or three ways the values looked at under the, the rules. Uh, value number one can be by appraisal, value number two can be by tax value. Uh, you can present either one of those with your, the dollar amount that your engineer comes up with to the inspection department. It is ultimately up to me to determine whether or not that dollar amount and that structural value are accurate against other structures within the town. Uh, in this particular case, we're probably, so you, you've got options. One option is you can just use the tax value. If you don't think that's right, you can get an appraisal done. And in this particular case, it would probably have to look at other places to find a structure that's similar to that one to get a good appraisal. It, it's up to you how, what number you give me, and then I will like, take a look at it and determine if it's actually a good structural value number. It's set that way because of the NFIP. That's not a building code or a, that's an NFIP thing.
That building currently has, and half of it at least has nothing in it. So, does, because we're talking about fifty percent of what's there. If, does the upfitting, like if a tenant came in and put a ice cream shop or whatever.
Let, let's, 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 let's make this more simple and, let me see if I can clarify. When y'all are talking about fifty percent, you need to understand that not everything you do in the building is, can, will be calculated. There is a list of what is included and what is excluded from improvement. Um, and so until we know what you're doing, we don't know what those numbers are that you're going to be included and excluded. Now, we do know we're gonna exclude all those things that are supposed to be safety issues that have already been identified and, and anything that would fall into that list. But there's also a list of other stuff that doesn't get included. You don't include paint. That's just an example. So it's not the dollar amount, it's what's included and excluded, and we have to go through and pick that out. So, you would have, you would, once you get a design, decide what you're gonna do, then I can tell you what's included and what's excluded.
The, the bulk of that engineer report on that building was just foundation, the ma, the majority of it. The walls, they look terrible, and they come on the outside, I agree, but nothing siding and windows can't fix, like, you know, to, for your eye. I don't know what condition the roof's in, um, it's just a pair of a wall and a flat roof. But the foundation was the biggest majority of it, I think, so. It's, it supports, half of it's on a slab, I guess, I'm assuming a monolithic slab, and then some of it's blocking field dirt. And then, for whatever reason, a portion of it's on a wood floor, and.
And there's some wood pilings going through the floor.
It, it's, it's, it's a combination of quite a bit. We identified, I think, somewhere I identified all those, and I can get those to you.
Okay.
But, yeah, it's, uh, the wood floor, we, we, we identified that wood floor that's in the restaurant area as being a safety issue. It's basically, it was built too close to the ground, and so it deteriorated over years and, and had some places where it got soft. So the floor system would, would be kind of excluded in the restaurant area. There's a pile system that, that actually supports the right-hand side from the door to the right-hand side. That foundation, pile system and foundation appears to be intact. They simply poured concrete.
Right.
Like a slab underneath it. It's not actually supporting the structure, uh, so to speak.
Yeah, yeah, I was.
Yeah, the left-hand side, the left-hand side beyond the restaurant, I can't remember if that was a slab or not, but, but it seems to me like it may have been part of a crawl space as well.
It goes back to concrete.
Yeah, it goes back to concrete, if I remember, as a little slab in there. So that, I don't, I don't know if that's a monolithic pore or, or what's under there.
So, here's the, you'll get it.
Okay.
But basically a non-functional bathroom, deterioration in the HVAC system, uh, egress issues, which, you know. We have to be, people have to be able to get in and out. Roof said further evaluation, walls, flood vents, and, uh, tie-downs you couldn't see. And the rest of it's foundation and floor.
Okay.
So.
And, and there was a new roof put on that building inside the last decade. I can't remember. I did go look it up now, forgot the date, but. And we actually permitted it and it was inspected. Uh, we did it, we did some preliminary look at, looks at it, but I don't know if there's any. I don't know what was there before they re-roofed it. Uh, they didn't tell us it was a problem, so.
And I didn't dig into it, but I had in my head kind of the whole, I was thinking more along the lines of maybe there was a possibility to set roof trusses and put a. A, a standard roof on it, like a hip roof or something that would take, you know, that maybe the maintenance would be lesser down the road. I don't know what the possibility that is versus.
Yeah.
Repairing or, repairing or.
Right, I guess, you know, the, the value of all that's gonna weigh, you're gonna have to weigh one thing over the other. The foundation, I mean, it's not, the building, it's not holding up a lot, you know, so I, I can't see how that would be a, too big of a deal to fix, but.
Yeah.
And, and your idea of doing the slab, flattening out the whole thing, probably.
Yeah, 'cause it's, it's like this, you know, when you, it's, it looks like you started here, and I don't know if it was all done at the same time.
It wasn't.
What even I thought, but it looked like it was just add-on, 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 and then when, I think, probably when they got to the grill. They said, hey, I'm gonna put a grill in, and then they cut the concrete back out. And they put the plumbing in, and then they put the wood floor back, 'cause it was easier and whatever, I don't know.
Okay.
Just.
Well, it's much clearer what, what you are expecting and.
The man's still loud, I don't know, so.
Oh, yeah.
Always is.
So if we go, if we go with.
Uh, Tim is, is your best resource there.
Right.
He, uh, he, he can.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
This way or this way, and, uh, we can hopefully work to a, a compromise.
Right, exactly.
We here all the time, here, something to do, somewhere to eat, something for, some recreational activities for people, and, and the fishermen.
Fishermen.
Really want it back.
Yeah.
And, you know, the little campground, although it ain't much to it, if we can get six campers there for twenty weeks, it adds up. And the thing we have to justify before anything is how we're gonna pay for this thing, without encumbering the residents of the town.
Yeah.
So, we're open to suggestions.
And you looking at the inspection report of the pier, underwater and the inspection, I think you can come to your own conclusions. As far as the cost and that kind of stuff. It'll give you the what, got pictures of what's wrong and what needs to be fixed. But, you know, there's, uh, probably different estimates on what the repair cost would be.
Sure, and, you know, we'll bid it out, of course, and we'll get different opinions right then, too.
Yes, sir. But, and like I said, bottom line is, uh, you know, once we get to a point where we do have a plan to work toward, uh, soliciting for some, some grants. To, uh, to help us, this project like, like you guys did over in Oak Island.
Mm-hmm, right.
But I'm sorry, I interrupted you twice.
With your experience doing the pier work and everything, is, if we were able to get grant money or anything like that, what's the chances of being able to get that back out to the original length that it was? Is that an option at all, or?
Uh, yeah, you know, I don't know if you, to be determined whether you're gonna get a grant to help you do that.
Mm-hmm.
And as long as KAMA and, you know, building laws over in, in the ocean would allow it, I, I don't see a problem doing it except for the money. But I, I think you could easily, uh, extend that pier out, build it from, from, put the piles in.
I think that'd be appeal to the fishermen.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean.
And that's gonna be what's gonna bring the money in to, to, to keep things going. My other que.
There's piles still out there.
Well, you can see them, but what's that?
Yeah, you could just set the piles, but a couple feet on either side of where they are and build it right out. I mean, a pier, I was surprised at how, you know, it looks great, it's not even as straight as it.
Yes, sir.
It, you know.
We went with, with Lake Gerald Brown there, we walked out there and just thought in the head, you know, if we could. We could get it safe to the, to the water's edge and nothing flat.
Yeah.
You know, 'cause people would at least be able to walk out on it, you know? They're dying to get on.
Oh, yeah.
It's, that's a, once that walkway's built, you know.
It would be a real, you know.
Even if the building's not up to snuff, maybe people could.
Well, if you get, you get better use out of what it is, what's there, you know, provide more use and more, you know, uh. I could name all kinds of things you could put in there, from ice cream to restaurants, the taco shop, the t-shirt, all the things that a typical pier house have in North Carolina.
There's gonna be no lack of tenants, I can promise you that.
Right, exactly, yeah.
Once we get something viable, it's, it's a done deal as far as that goes, but.
It increases your ability to do a lot of things you wanna do there, really think about people with access. You're gonna open a big door.
Elderly and handicap accesses opens a lot of doors.
If we renovate the, the existing building, we'd have to put the bathrooms in there, would we do a separate, like, shower house, ADA compliant with bathrooms, separate from that building for the public use?
Uh, that seems like it would be a good idea, right off the top of my head, you know, you have your bathrooms for the business and the pier. And all the people it's saying, and their kids are saying, you keep them in a bathhouse out adjacent or wherever the site plan seems like makes.
Because that's one of the things we need to do kind of quickly, is the ADA compliant access bathrooms.
Do you, you know, off, on the pier report, is the ramp up to the, out of the building, is that steeper than a handicap, or it is?
I believe, I believe that's what Mr. Dealworth, Lieutenant Dealworth asked retained when he was doing them, they had just. That the slope too much still.
I'm pretty sure it's not too much.
It's not compliant.
It's not compliant. It wouldn't be compliant for other reasons, too. Yeah, even access to it's not compliant, so.
I mean, there did actually.
Doesn't matter if it's ramped right, you know what I mean, but it's, I'm, if you had, if I had to take a guess, I haven't looked, but I bet you ninety-nine percent that it's not. The slope's too great.
Well, what I would say for buildings, Inspector, wasn't saying, you know, there are a lot of buildings that, facilities that have things that aren't ADA compliant. Somebody brings a lawsuit on them, as long as you're fixing them while the lawsuit's going up, they dismiss, and you just fix it at that point. And that pier's been sitting there a long time with nobody.
No, yeah, well, well, there's a, there's a practicality issue, too. It was built prior to the, and that one was, prior to the ADA requirements. Then unless it was practical, you didn't have to change it. That's the way that law actually ru, reads. But in this particular case, if we're gonna go out there and start doing the kind of work that's gonna need to be done, it's gonna have to be brought into compliance. But bringing that portion into compliance from there to where it's ramped up is extremely easy, 'cause we can do it from our other, the facility that we're already planning on putting in. The plan has already been put in place, which goes into those decks that will not be attached to the structure, which won't count. Around to the rear of the building that then can transition to the overhead overlooked decks that I've talked about, that would transition into the pier. So then you could have access, my thoughts were you could have access through the building and access through the handicap ramp that we're getting a grant for on the right-hand side.
So.
Because handicap access does not deny public access. Everybody can use it. It's better for everybody.
Right.
So there's a ramp, sorry, been designed?
Well, I wrote, we wrote, uh, some minor specifications for design for the grant. And, and it talks about the, what we tend to do in excess of the minimum requirements.
Mm-hmm, so you could satisfy that handicap portion, leave the ramp out, coming out of the building just like it is?
That's right. That was the plan.
Again, Tim would be your best resource there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sure.
Instead of going down a path that we can't.
Right.
Go down, we can better go down a path that, uh, that makes it the best for everybody.
Okay, well, I, you know, it's much clearer to me what the final vision is for this project. And, you know, and when we put our proposal together, we just bring it to, I guess, conceptual schematic design, or you honestly take it all the way through. To, you know, through construction and open, just on the proposal.
Well, I think to start with, we just need a concept.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
To, for us, because we're at some point, chief, we, we, we really need to make sure that our, the people here at Holden Beach. You know, get a look at something and, and have a, some way for them to, to make suggestions and, and that kind of stuff, 'cause it's, uh, it's for everybody.
Right, but you, yeah, that's, you're right, it is for everybody, and you surely want to.
I mean, something that I've been thinking about, if, let's say we had two leasable spaces there, what do you do for parking typically? Like at the O'Pon Pier, like I, I didn't really, I went out there and looked at the whole facility and several of them, but what do they do for parking?
Uh.
Do they have designated parking for the, the leased spaces?
Well.
'Cause we have a, right now, our situation, there's an entire paid parking lot, so.
The parking's gonna be designated by your zoning ordinance typically, and so I'd have to get into that, see what's required. And if you have a fishing pier section in there, I don't know, Nag, Nag's Head had one, and it was like, so many spaces couldn't, you know, couldn't do, couldn't build. Pier wouldn't even make it to the ocean, you know, so I guess, and, and of course you can amend the zoning if you feel like it doesn't accomplish what you, everybody. Wants for the facility, but the zoning ordinance is gonna dictate parking. And then on top of that, it's gonna have parking for the pier, maybe, maybe not, if not, won't worry about it. But if, whatever those businesses are, say it's a restaurant and a retail shop, uh, like probably what it was before. Then whatever, you know, and I would think you have plenty of parking for those two businesses right there, just.
I, I agree.
Yeah, I mean, you got a good, good amount of space, you got a great, you know, it's a great setup.
You got plenty of parking for what would be required for both a business occupancy, you put some mercandile in there.
Yeah.
It, it would be determined how we dictate what that pier is, um, would then determine, or what portion of it is. Uh, it's gonna go back to us at zoning to determine the pier itself. We don't have any, we don't have a, not, it may be in there, but I don't recall it, 'cause we only have one pier, but.
Yeah.
But, um, for the others, you got plenty, you got plenty, and the, the pier would probably be a portion of one or the other, or it could be excluded as a walkway.
Right, and say, you know, those people going to the pier walking there from where it's staying, or, you know, some, it's work for this, you know, there needs to upset.
A lot of people live in the vicinity, so.
Yeah. Okay, well.
Anyway, we, we definitely want your input, so we may need, um, more places to park instead of a campground, or, you know, things like that, if you say, well, we have to have more parking.
Well, but.
Whatever, you just let us know and.
Isn't the campground part of the consideration of the part of grant, recreational use? It was on the conceptual site plan of what your intended thought that you might do with the space was.
We'd like to keep it, but.
Might redesign it a little bit where they can.
So he's gonna.
Face to face now, where you might put them in a hangar or something.
Yeah, like six parks.
Make it more accessible.
Yeah, so those three that's in there right now, they, they gotta be pretty good friends.
So, uh, is, are there existing drawings of the pier house?
As a survey, something like that, that's it.
So we'll come down.
On a napkin somewhere.
We'll come down, build a pair of, and measure everything up, including the pier.
I've got it, well, you better do it. I've got it measured out.
Okay.
But it's just on a piece of paper.
Right, yeah.
And I guess one of the things we'll need to know is if you think, which would be quicker for us to get, if we can possibly get anything up for the season, would, do we work on the pier, get that open so people? pier, get that open so people can use it while we work on the building, or vice versa, or does that make any sense?
Yeah, I, I, it would be, I don't think you would have that pier open by this coming summer.
Right, I'm just saying if we have to do it, and just to show the townspeople, we're continuing to make efforts, you know, cleaning it up, and even if we just get handicap bathrooms and showers out there, I think, you know, that's the first phase, I mean, maybe that has to be done for, I, I'm just asking...
Yeah, I, I mean, getting the building done, the same time you get, you know, getting it up to speed, same time you're getting the pier repaired, that seems like would be the best way, and this is all open, because, you know, the length of time it's gonna take to repair the pier, you could repair the building, is, I guess, one of the...
Right, but would it be, if this, we're talking a couple seasons or whatever, would it be behoove us to try to get some bathrooms and shower houses in there until we can get the building open, so the public can use them, 'cause right now they're using porta-potties?
Uh, I, I mean, you, you could, but it, it's not gonna happen by the summer, I think your porta-potties probably...
Okay.
Because it would take us three, three months, and I'm just, the consult, our consultants, everybody's so busy, you know, it's three months to get it designed, and, you know, I'd say six months to get built, or maybe more.
Mm-hmm.
So you're right in the some middle of the summer, if not beyond.
There is a, there is a monetary advantage to phasing this project.
Well, see, we have a choice.
But there is a real monetary advantage to phasing this project. We have a two-year, not one year, we have a two-year substantial improvement ordinance for the 50%, ours is two, not one.
Mm-hmm.
So the monetary advantage to phasing it is, is that two years from the issuance of a completion for any portion would, would then delete that value out of your substantial improvement within two years.
Hmm.
So the scope of the work, if phased, if not phased, could be limited by time. If phased, in other words, you could have a, 'cause it, it takes a while, it takes a while to do anything, e- especially when you're doing that kind of work. If you take into consideration from the time a permit's issued, and you do the overall plan over a long period, and you phase it properly, you can have a really nice facility there, that's what I'm saying, at a reduction in cost.
I was thinking that the pier and the pier house could be considered separate as far as evaluating 50%.
The pier will not be considered.
Okay, right, okay.
It's not part of that structure itself, and if it was, it would still be a walkway, not a, you follow what I'm saying?
Yeah, not part of the structure.
Which is why I'm saying, if we call it a pier dock and a walkway, you know what I mean, then, maybe...
Okay, well...
Chip, well, after, once you get the rest of the information you need from, from our town staff, you know, your conceptual ideas, are you talking about a month, two months, six months?
I, I would think we, we could have something in two months, and, and, you know, we may, depending on the survey, what it, you know, I think we would want to come down here and measure that building up and draw it, so we can plan the new bathrooms for just, let's just say it's a restaurant and a retail space, or, and that retail space might get carved up into a couple different types, or, you know, could be several retail spaces, or food concession type spaces.
Well, checking your head note, Tim.
Just thinking.
It might be good for the...
I hear you, Chip.
For the, uh, architectural firm and the inspector to have some private sessions to more clearly understand the regulations and the methods that needed to be considered...
Oh, it...
Before coming to the public and taking the chance of getting wrong information, misunderstood and beyond.
Yeah, that's a wonderful idea from my perspective, you know, because, but also, like, obviously very knowledgeable about it, and we, we sit around in our office all the time and say, "Well, I don't know if they're gonna allow us to do that," and, you know, it'd be great if we had that dialogue right from the start.
But, but we got one caveat to that, it works great, but we got one caveat, and I guess I need to go ahead and throw this out here. I, I can't be your, your...
Designer consultant.
Can, but yeah, you got that, can, you're gonna need to put somebody else in charge of the project, I can't do that, I can't be the designer consultant, but I can't, I can tell them what they can and can't do, and have a discussion about what their designs are and all that, but someone else has to be in charge of that project, it's unethical for me to be in charge and making decisions and then inspecting it. So, can't, can't, go ahead and get that out there, it can't be me.
Yeah, well, we're, we're, we're used to, you know, every project, we, we research the code, research the zoning, research the environmental implications or restrictions, and, uh, we're, we're used to doing that all our, our...
Yeah, but, 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 yeah, I, I'm not telling you, I'm telling you I'll be there 100% for you for all that.
Yeah.
What I'm saying is, is that, that, that I can't, the town can't, can't look at me as being the person, the go-to person for this project, for, for, you know what I mean, I can help you and the architects and the engineers, I can give you all the information that's in my head and all that, but I cannot be in charge, it's, it's unethical for me to be one making the decisions about all these things.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we, we're, we'll come up with a concept of like what that building could be, like, here's your grill, might as well keep it there, here's your area that open, might open up to the outside deck, or at least have windows on that right side when you go in, you know, and here's your bar, and, uh, all those kind of things that everybody likes to have when they go to the beach, turn it into a real vibrant oasis.
It was also mentioned by, well, I know Gerald and I talked about it, um, all the town buildings kind of, I don't wanna say they look the same, but they complement each other.
Uh-huh.
The lift stations, the pavilion, the town hall, you know, if you could maybe keep that in mind, I think that's, I guess, not sa, I guess we want it to look like a, a town...
Yeah.
Property, nice, not, you know, just throwing that out there.
Yeah, oh, yeah, well, we're doing that at Riceville Beach right now, and, you know, we, we designed a bathhouse and a shower house for Riceville Beach, and that structure was, uh, it was $500,000, just for the bathrooms and the shower house.
Floodproof.
Well, we have one that's floodproof, that, I think that one was $600,000, like, small.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's, that's another issue, yeah, we've got, we've gotta do a floodproof structure.
You hear me, yeah.
The only thing I was gonna add is currently what we're operating of, there's the paid parking and the campground has run this summer, um, what we're finding is on our registration forms, just as Gil did, um, you can have more than the one vehicle that you bring, and some people do, but we have nowhere for the other vehicles to park, because there's the six spots and it's all paid parking, um, so we wanna keep that in consideration while we're kind of, you're laying out your conceptual design for parking, and the other part of that is i- if there is spaces that you were to say, "Okay, well, we're gonna allow paid parking," currently it breaks the ordinance, 'cause you can't park in a town spot between two and five. So that's some of the things we're running into with just a couple people that had extra cars.
Okay, well, I'll keep, you know, I only have one other question I was thinking of, and I, I wanna bother y'all with the minutia of it, but what is the elevation of that floor relative to flood elevation?
Where it's at right now?
Yeah.
About six and a half, eight and seven feet.
And y'all have pre-board, out of the main?
We got two foot pre-board, our DFE is a fifty feet.
Uh-huh, so your bathhouse probably be in the flood zone, which would then have to be floodproof.
We, we talked about putting the public restrooms within the existing...
Oh, within the, okay, yeah, with the exterior entrance, or...
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, you could do both with a pass-through.
Okay, then you just, then you just put some showers out there and you're good, okay.
You could do out, well, I guess, I don't know what your thoughts is, you could do outside showering.
Yeah, right, yeah, yeah, just...
Well, there was that nasty bathroom building that got torn down.
That wasn't there.
That, that, that was in no way, shape, or form usable.
Yeah, they, they all get like that after a while, after a couple decades.
You, you, you have no proof that was ever there?
Yeah.
Anyway, if you put them in, if we utilize what we've got...
Right, yeah, okay.
We'll be okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm with you on that, okay.
Yeah, we're not looking, we all see what we're just having in Florida, so it could be taken away, yes.
Right, yeah.
But, just keep that in mind.
Of course, that's the danger of refurbishing all this building, it comes right in, as opposed to...
Well, building the new one is out of budget.
Yeah, there you go. Okay, well, that, I mean, I don't, can't think of any questions off the top of my head as far as give a proposal and what your expectations of the project would be.
I pray it'll be there another 50 years.
You commissioners got any questions?
Other than David, you can, you can email them the different...
I'll get them all that stuff, I got about seven or eight things here, I jot it down. My, I, I do have one question for you, because it relates to the proposal coming forward to the board, how long do you think the, it's gonna take you to get that, 'cause the clerk's gonna be hitting me to put it, to get it to her tomorrow or Wednesday, and so if, if you, if it's not able to be included in the agenda package, depending on what the board wants to do, you'll have to call a special meeting to consider it, or it'll be on the November agenda.
Uh, well, for a conceptual drawing, you know, I don't really need my consultants to be part of that, you know, I'm, I'm gonna come up with a site plan, and, you know, do this, that, that, and we're gonna assume the pier's gonna be repaired in the next, you know, step. Um, so I, I'm thinking I can get it to you probably within 10 days.
Okay. So that, that's beyond the board meeting, just so the board's cognizant of that.
All right, anything else, staff, anybody got any questions, statements? Not...
Chip, I really appreciate you taking time to come down and, and talk to us about this, this is a project that a lot of us is dear to our hearts.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And, uh, we, we're looking forward to, to moving forward.
Okay, well, I, I just wanna say again, thanks for including me and be part of it, you, I got all excited when I walked out there on the beach, you know, the nice little waves rolling in, everybody sitting out there, pier's empty, but, you know, I can see it, you know, and, and I'm sure it's always been like that, a real life center of town in the summer.
Yes, sir.
And just, just, just so I'm clear on the administrativity of it, what you're talking about is getting a proposal to develop the conceptual renderings.
A propos?
You're not, you're not saying that you're going to have the conceptual renderings...
No.
In 10 days, you're getting a proposal together for the board to consider that.
And, and when I, when I say conceptual, um, I know it has renderings on here, and I, I think we should just go with a, a site plan at this point, and everybody assumes the scope of work, and then once we get into the next phase, we deliver the renderings at that point, because it, it's always hard to, to draw a picture of something that hadn't been designed yet.
You wanna give us a floor plan?
Right, site, site plan...
Just, I call it a floor plan.
Yeah, there's a site plan that will contain a floor plan of the building.
Yeah, and I think it'd be very helpful if in your proposal that if you articulated it that way.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I will, don't, hey, I'll spell all that out.
Okay.
And, uh...
And we have to have a special meeting to, uh, take care of it, I think, uh, we all in agreement we can do that.
Okay, we're prepared for that.
Okay. All right.
Chair, sure we'd like a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion, we adjourn, like you said.
All right, oh, I'm afraid to say that. We adjourn, thank you for being here.